Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to talk tonight or today. I'm here to ask you not to give a tax break to Monsanto. Three main reasons. These are not the people we want in Pima County because of their history of pollution, the bad reputation that Pima County is going to get because of having Monsanto here, and money or lack thereof. First, pollution. They have a bad history of polluting their environment. There's a case in Anniston, Alabama where they polluted the creek. A lot of the people are coming down with diabetes and cancers. We don't know what they're going to be producing here, what they're going to be putting on those crops that they're growing here. It's going to be experimental. That's dangerous. There's no scientific studies that have been done. Number two, the reputation of Pima County as a safe, clean place to live will be sullied by having these people here. Anybody that knows their history will think twice about coming to Pima County to live. Property values, certainly near the plant, will go down. Number three is money. They probably won't be employing a lot of people here. Most of the plant's going to be automated. The people they do use may be specialists that they will bring in. Plus, you have to consider the cost of cleanup once they do pollute the environment. Don't count on them cleaning it up. They have a very bad record of not doing that. Don't count on the EPA doing it. Their funds probably will be cut in the administration that's coming on. That means the people of Pima County will be getting the bill for the cleanup and all the health care that the pollution can cause. So I ask you, please, do not give them any encouragement to come here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I've made it very clear that I am opposed to the presence -- Monsanto's presence in our community. I'm opposed to them receiving federal trade zone status, and I'm opposed to you offering them a letter of no objection on our behalf. I'm trying very hard to imagine myself in your shoes. How would I feel and ultimately what would I do, knowing that the vote I was about to make has no legislative power? It has been most effectively explained that even if each and every one of you voted unanimously against this letter of no objection, the power of the Federal Department of Commerce can, even though it hasn't historically, decide the fate of the people of this community. I don't want to believe that's why any of you ran for political office. I don't want to believe that your intention was to be a paid rubber stamp. I want to believe that you truly want to make life better for the people who struggle and work out their existence in this valley. So what is this vote about? This vote is an exercise in moral acceptance. Do you accept that all people are born with inalienable rights? Do you accept that government derives its just power from the consent of the governed? Do you accept that the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona must be defended against all enemies, foreign and domestic? This vote may not have any legislative power, but it does carry a very specific defining power. What it clearly defines is who is a friend to liberty and the Constitution of which its purpose is to protect individual and human rights, specifically the citizens of this community. Regarding denying Monsanto foreign trade zone status or their presence in our community at all, Supervisor Valadez made it clear that the venue for that discussion is not here. The state is where this argument needs to happen. Mr. Huckleberry confirmed it would require a revision of state law. As inheritors of freedoms fought for in our founding revolution, it is our responsibility as citizens, it is your responsibility as our representatives, to not only arrive at a verdict based on the law, but to judge whether or not the law is just. You've heard a great deal of public and emotional outcry, but I understand that you are in a difficult position. Not unlike a parent, you are being forced to make a decision about something unpopular that will ultimately be in the best interest of your constituents. The question is, do you have all the information necessary to make that decision? Before you is a piece of current law as it regards this issue. Unless you know what that is, what it says, or its implications on a federal, state, or local level, I hope you will humbly consider that you do not currently nor yet possess enough information to submit a letter of no objection. If you recognize and understand its significance, I simply remind you that just law is our servant, not our master. Unjust law is enslaving. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. reminds us, "A threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere."
Amida Van Winkle.
Good morning. My name is Amida Van Winkle. I am a taxpayer, voting citizen, in District 3. My concerns are also regarding Monsanto's Project Greenhouse out in unincorporated Morana. My biggest concern is that we don't know what is going to happen on the remaining acreage out there. They've only told us what they're going to do on seven, maybe ten, of those acres. Now, we've heard Herb Kai say that they will grow open field experimental corn out there. But of course, Monsanto's representative said that's not true. He doesn't speak for a company. But, come on, we all know. They purchased all that land. They intend to use it because they have a responsibility to their shareholders, and we have great light in Pima County. So we can't accept that they're not going to use the rest of that land, and we don't know what they're going to use it for. So we have to think that they are going to use it, especially if they receive that FTC designation with the accompanying tax relief. Now, I'm not a scientist. I'm not a physician. I'm not an engineer. I'm just a mom, a daughter, a sister, a friend. But in a way, that is more powerful because I am responsible for the health of my children, of my dad, of the people that depend on me. And until we know for sure that the chemicals that they're going to use are 100% safe, I cannot go along with this. I cannot go along with this. And we don't know that they're safe. The representative, and I've spoken to several of them at the open public meetings, have told me glyphosate is safe. Glyphosate, the active ingredient in Roundup, is safe. The EPA says it's safe. The WHO says it's safe. The World Health Organization says it's safe. And yes, they have. But just last month, they're still having meetings. They're still having a scientific panel review that information. Just last month. And they're split. They're still split on whether or not that active ingredient, glyphosate, is safe. They've already told us they're going to use glyphosate. Now, the greenhouse, that sounds okay. That sounds nice. But we don't know, and maybe you do, but I don't know what is happening on the other acreage. And I'm very scared. I'm very concerned for my children and everybody else's children out there. What else did I want to say? So I'm begging you, I'm pleading, I'm requesting very respectfully that you stand with me, and all we can do is not give them the letter of non-objection. And I -- I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne Jones.
Yes. I would like to say in consideration of Monsanto that I also feel the same as these last two. That as far as its production and use of pesticides and GMO seeds, that I, as well as five other organizations here in Tucson, that we appealed, we talked to Governor Hall years ago in 1998 about toxic chemicals and things, and pesticides was one of them. And we all feel the same way. We do not want Monsanto here. And whether they sell out to Bayer over in Germany or whether they come themselves, whichever way, we don't want them here. The reason is because their products kill, injure, and harm people, as well as the bugs, and our needed pollinators like bees. Why should we promote and allow such dangerous products to be used and produced in our county? Many of us come here for health reasons, coming to breathe clean air and drink clean water and eat good food and preserve this area for future generations and for them to do the same. The pesticides are the number-one killer of children. I know of six adults that have died. I know these people personally, at least six adults that have died in the Pima County area in the last 10 years of pesticides. I have almost died many, many times myself and several times from Monsanto's Roundup. My grandmother, that was a nurse's aide, she could not even get a pulse out of me. I was sitting down reading a book, just totally fine, everything, and then the pesticides came in and it was from, we already know where it was from. And it just totally changed, just totally just changed my whole body into just like raw hamburger and just totally disabled just right there and then major heart trouble. She couldn't even get a pulse out of me. She saved my life. Later, it killed her. So, and there's six others. I could go into detail, but there's not more time to talk about all of them. But I say, please, do not use them anymore. There are safer, non-toxic products to use instead. These provide, these companies, we need to promote these other companies instead of Monsanto and its buyers. We do not want GMO seeds and its products of Monsanto here either. They have negative effects on people, too. We do not want our native seeds, here in particular, to this area. They kept it native all these years, thousands of years, and we have them right here in Pima County, native seeds. We do not want those destroyed. We have them, and the rest of the country doesn't. We do not want our native seeds messed up either. So please do not allow them to come here. Please save us. It's not right. I go down the street and people use pesticides indiscriminately, and I just become disabled over and over again. It's just not right. The lawyer that I saw back in 2000, December 2000, he wanted me to sue you, but I chose not to. But I ask you, please, this is serious. I've died almost, many times, I've almost died, and I'm still in a situation where it's just so hard. So please, please don't let them come and keep doing this to us.
Fred. And it looks like P, and then I can't follow bills. Looks like F-A-R-V-I-L-S.
Oh, Barry. P-F-A-R-R-I-U-S.
Okay, gotcha. Now, I, okay.
Thank you for giving this card. I will pay for it later.
First, I'd like to thank you very much for allowing me and other people here to talk to you. I'm a new full-time transplant here. I've been coming here for about eight years, and now retired, and I am now a resident of the Oral Valley Tucson area. One of my big decisions of coming here and living here is of the large variety of organic foods and organic meats and what have you we can have here. I'm a 12-and-a-half-year cancer survivor. The last four or five years, I have used, I call it a lifestyle, but you would call it a diet, to help fight my cancer, using my body's own cancer treatment or my own body's own immune system. It has worked fairly well. The hip, unfortunately, my walking problem is not cancerous, is arthritis. That comes with age. You'll all find that out if you don't know it. As the young lady just talked about the greenhouse on the Monsanto project, you all know that a greenhouse is put up especially for the wintertime so they can extend their growing seasons and do experimentals. But certainly during the warmer weather, they will be opening up that greenhouse to vent the hot air out, and that will let the spores or whatever else they're working on out into the public to help pollute crops, local crops or crops miles and miles away. I'm not an expert on how far things travel, but I do know that, and I have heard, that corn crops especially, you can be 50 miles away, and some of the spores from the corn can cross-pollinate. And one of the last things I'd like to kind of talk about, maybe some people don't know, but insecticides that have been made by Monsanto and/or other companies, how the bugs die. Many of you may just know, oh, they spray it on, the bugs die. That's great. The bugs die because the insecticide or whatever they're eating, whatever it is, if you want to call it an insecticide or whatever, burns a hole in their gut, and they die. Now, just think about it. This is sprayed on a crop, and the bugs die. Oh, good. You got a bigger yield, which is great. But the residue gets into the food chain, goes down into the water, comes up through the plant, and you and I are eating that in non-organic crops. And that's one of the reasons you may have family members, you may have heard of the great increase of people's problems with digestion, gut leaking, et cetera. Again, I'd like to thank you for your time and your service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I mangled your name. Heath Van Winkle.
As far as Monsanto goes, nuclear, biological, and chemical weapons used to scare the hell out of me in the military. Monsanto produces two out of three biological and chemical weapons. That's who you're dealing with. Wake up.
I want to say thank you to this Pima County Board of Supervisors and to Mr. Valadez in particular, who isn't here at the moment, for the open meetings on this issue of modified corn production proposed within our community. I have gotten to learn about some amazing technology in the concept of greenhouse production of food. I have gotten to meet some knowledgeable, well-intentioned people on both sides of the issue, but must still take a stand against the whole concept of GMOs, glyphosate, and the next iterations of GMOs, stronger herbicides and insecticides. The result has been poor stewardship of our health and our planet. I reject the basic premise of this manipulation of science. The next step, in my mind, is to ask the board for the opportunity to meet with the Science Advisory Committee with the same free exchange of ideas and information. I appreciate Patrick Kavanaugh, who has conducted these meetings with a fair and even hand, summarizing arguments reasonably well and posting accessible information for both sides on the Pima.gov website. I have listened to John Post and other local farmers whose livelihoods they perceive as having been enriched, even saved, by genetically-modified seeds and related herbicides. I conversed after the Morana School Board meeting with his dad, Dan Post, hearing about their continued use of good agricultural practices of crop rotation, fallow ground, and alfalfa crops. That helps counter my concern of the corporate, industrialized, monoculture farming that has followed in the wake of Monsanto's direct and indirect takeover of agriculture in the Midwest. There are good people in small-scale farming out here in the independent West. But none of that has changed the fact that this whole experiment of genetically-modified foods and creation of killer herbicides and pesticides has been bad for humans, animals, native environments, the soil, water, and air, and was pulled off without our consent. It's been in our food supply for 30 years. These fine scientists and farmers need to reevaluate their priorities of life and find ways to use technology and their agricultural practices to once again work in harmony with God, nature, and the environment and reverse this outrage. They need to see the results of their handiwork on their fellow farmers who raise animals for food, which are increasingly sick with things those farmers have never seen before. It is only when they change their diets that they see dramatic improvement in the health of their animals, and their livelihood is saved. The same has happened for me and many humans. There is adequate, I'm going to skip, there is adequate science and proof that this infiltration of our food supply has stopped.
Your time has expired. If you've got something written down, we'll be happy to take it, and then we'll put it on our website.
I want to stop right here in Pima County. Good morning, everyone. Well, I see that raising tax money is one of the priorities in Pima County and that you want to raise the sales tax a half a percent because of lack of funding in Pima. But you went ahead and gave the county administrator Chuck Huckleberry an additional $8,000 because you don't have money. And I guess you're going to want to raise a half a percent more for the sales tax because you don't have money, but yet you have money for some salaries, the second-highest paid in the United States, especially now that we find out that Mr. Huckleberry has been in secret negotiations to give a tax break to Monsanto for their planned greenhouse and also for the use of the fields to grow their corn. The environmental impacts will not be minimal. The Monsanto Corporation is well-known and its people for lying. Tell the people anything now, and then it'll be too late to stop Monsanto. Ah, too bad. In 1993, the concept of substantial equivalence was introduced by the Organization for Economic Development. Sounds good, doesn't it? However, this is an international trade company. They want to make money, not a public health body. Monsanto uses Roundup and other chemicals that are known probable carcinogens, as reported by the International Agency for Research on Cancer. They use dicamba, I hope I'm saying it correctly, that can kill crops and gardens miles away. What then will you do? It will be too late. The soil will be destroyed and our water tainted forever. The Board of Supervisors has the responsibility to protect this land and the people who live here now, the people who will live here in the future. And if you allow this deplorable company to do what they want, I'm moving out. I'm, I just moved, I've had a house here for 17 years and just moved full-time here, but when I just found this out, what's happening? Get me out of here. They tell you what they're going to do and what they want to do, but that's not true. It'll be too late when you find out what they will do in the future. If you want your tax base to become smaller, you are on the correct road. People will move out. Don't under, I don't understand how the Board of Supervisors do not encourage.
Your time has up. Thank you so much. Tori Postle. Tori Postle.
Good morning. I strongly oppose the foreign trade zone designation and the tax break that Monsanto is seeking. It's a multibillion-dollar corporation that can afford to and should pay its full amount of taxes, just like all of us and all of the other businesses in the county. In fact, using Monsanto's figures from fiscal year 2016, it had a profit of $3.6 million per day. This is not a company that needs a tax break. Instead, we should be offering and investing in our local businesses and the local farmers who are doing environmentally healthy and sustainable farming and are the backbone of our thriving farmers markets and the local food movement. Tucson is one of the only places in the world with that UNESCO City of Gastronomy designation, the only one in the United States, one of eight in the world. Per foreign trade zone regulations, a zone must adequately serve the public interest and must not be detrimental to public interest, health, or safety, or pose unusual or unacceptable problems or hazards. This in and of itself should disqualify Monsanto for foreign trade zone considerations. It has a history of poisoning the surrounding air, soil, and groundwater, and then using its power and wealth to avoid the ramifications from that. Their products are known to be hazardous to humans and all living things, Agent Orange, Roundup, dicamba, highly-toxic herbicides associated with lung cancer, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, reproductive damage, birth defects, and hormonal disruption. This threatens the health of the unique ecosystem of the Sonoran Desert, which brings tourists from all over the world. And it also threatens the health and quality of life of the citizens of this community. This is the company that we want to let set up shop one and a half miles away from a high school. Seven-acre greenhouses, this is a way of lulling us into complacency, when the full plan is to eventually use the rest of the land for traditional ground production with all the spraying and chemicals that that brings with it, as well as using other local farmers to raise test plots. The research and experimentation done in the greenhouse will not stay contained, as they say it will, which raises the issue of contamination of surrounding conventional and organic farms and the economic impact that will have. Plus, Monsanto has a history of suing those farms after they've been contaminated. This is only going to bring 40 to 60 jobs with an average salary of $44,000 a year, and there's no guarantee that that's going to be local hires. If you support this tax break, then you, the county supervisors, will be selling the citizens of Pima County for a few measly jobs.
Sue Ann Christensen.
I also want to thank you for listening to us. I know you're elected officials. I know that you're here for our accountability and making our lives a great place to live. I moved here from California 11 years ago, and I know the accountability that I count on you for in making my world a great place to live. I still want it from you. As Tori said, UNESCO is one of the things, it was the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization that gave us this award that were only one of eight cities in the whole world. That's pretty significant. Part of that is the way our agriculture has been for 4,000 years. One of the ladies also alluded to the fact that we have seed here. That's incredible. And it is true. Monsanto, I was first brought to there, my attention to them, was in the movie Food Inc., which was put out in 2008 and which was aired in a pre-screen in the little library that I live by. In that movie, they said how they will come in and bully farmers if there's some of the seed that floats into their land, and there are people who go right out of business because the cost of what it takes to fight this ends up being that they can't do it. So that is a possibility that we are facing, and we're concerned about it. There is a school that's nearby. There's the cap that's nearby. There's a lot of resources that are nearby this facility, right on Twin Peaks in Sanders, which is near their regional airport. So we are concerned about that. And while the zone is for foreign trade, they aren't a foreign trade. They're a multinational company that gives the illusion, even coming in in some kind of fake way, that they're saying that they are qualified for this, and you've already heard a lot of information about what they can afford. And we're, I'm begging you to not let them circumvent this. They can do it if they come in here and make them, supposedly, I heard that part of this is to help them be transparent. And being transparent, but they're not always transparent. They were slapped an $80 million fine. That's a lot of money. And that was in 2016 for some of their accounting practices that were not being properly reported. So this is a company that is really going to be transparent and tell you the truth? They're not telling the truth, and it's been going on for years. 2008 was when it was first brought to my attention. It was happening before that. We're going on a good 10 years now. So I beg you, please, don't let them come in because it will take a whole lot more money to clean, more money to clean up what they're doing. And I appreciate that you allow us to come in and talk to you because it is an issue that we all have near and dear to our hearts, and thank you.
Thank you. Cory McGraw.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cory McGraw, and I'm a Pima County concerned citizen, voter, and small business owner. I'm here to ask you to vote no on Monsanto. I don't believe that in good conscience we can give them their letter of no objection. As far as this foreign trade zone is concerned, there's an exception for things that are detrimental to public interest, health, or safety. The site for that is cbp.gov, the Customs and Border Patrol website. Monsanto has a track record and extensive